Scottish, I'm gonna read a bunch of Scottish.
You'll be alone.
I'm sure. Everybody will be gone.
All right.
Not tonight.
All right.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, January 25, 2021. Prior to our call to order and roll call this evening, a couple of housekeeping announcements. We will have a place on our agenda, as we usually do, for public participation. If you are not on the agenda and would like to take part in public participation, simply fill out a speaker request form, give it to our executive assistant Ruth Scott in the back, she will get it to me, and we will get you on at the appropriate time. Then that's for anyone who would like to make any comments on any item on the agenda, or for that matter, not on the agenda. With that, I will call this meeting to order, and we'll ask our city clerk Lynn Fazikas, who is joining us remotely tonight, to call the roll, please.
Morris.
Here.
Finukin.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Is Alderman Perkins there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Thank you. McAdam.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. Would you please arise, and let's recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Following along on tonight's agenda, if you don't happen to have a copy, there are copies out on the table just before you enter the room. Our first item on the agenda is to approve tonight's agenda. If there are any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda, I would first ask city council if they desire any additions or deletions. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Discussion. Roll call.
Morris.
Yes.
Finukin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdam.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight aye.
Thank you. The agenda is approved as printed. We now move to item D on the agenda, public participation. Is there anyone in the audience, or anyone on Zoom? I don't believe so. I have not gotten any sheets or any indication earlier today that there is anybody who would like to speak at this point in time. So we'll move right along to presentations. Tonight, I'm honored to have three certificates of appreciation to three individuals in our community who have really done yeoman's duty, if you will, on several boards and commissions. Most of our terms are two years, three years, or four years. These folks have averaged about 10 years of community service. And I know a couple of them are on. I don't know if our first recipient is, but I'm gonna ask our recipient, after I read the very short certificate of recognition, if they'd like to make any comments, they're more than welcome to do that. Our first presentation tonight is for Ken, is to Ken Cook, for nine years of service, almost 10, for his service on the Environmental Commission. This certificate reads, is presented to Ken Cook, Citizens Environmental Commission, 2011 to 2020. The DeKalb City Council and its staff extend sincere thanks and appreciation for your willingness to serve DeKalb and its citizens on the Citizens Environmental Commission from June 13, 2011, through December 31, 2020. Ken, are you on the Zoom tonight? If not, we'll make sure that Ken gets that. You know what I liked about Ken, is here as a fellow on our Environmental Commission, he was so frustrated at what he felt, probably legitimately so, at the way that city government sometimes moves along very slowly. But he was very, very instrumental in providing good input to our Environmental Commission, and we really appreciate that. Our next certificate goes to Christina Atherton Doe, for 10 years of service to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The DeKalb City Council and its staff extend sincere thanks and appreciation for Chris's willingness to serve DeKalb and its citizens on the Planning and Zoning Commission from October 11, 2010, through December 31, 2020. When it comes to economic development, Chris Doe saw a lot of this at its very inception. Because, as you know, so many things go to planning and zoning prior to coming to city council for discussion. Chris likes to tell me that she's a small-town girl from, I think, Paw Paw, Illinois, who arrived in DeKalb many, many years, and has gotten involved in our community in so many ways. And Chris, I see you're on our Zoom tonight. If you'd like to make any comments, feel free to unmute yourself and have at it.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. It was my, it's been my honor and privilege to serve on Planning and Zoning Commission. I actually started on the Zoning Board of Appeals and was able to join the commission, as you had said, back in 2010. We've made some great strides in the city of DeKalb, and I'm so happy to have been part of a lot of positive changes that have taken effect and been part of some really great change. I know there's a lot of great things coming up and yet to come, and I have encouraged my fellow past commissioners to keep the stride going and remember the reason why we do what we do. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks for all your years of service. Our next certificate goes to Susan Johnston, 13 years of service on the Plan, on the Community Enhancement Commission. The city of DeKalb and its city council extend sincere thanks and appreciation for Sue's willingness to serve the DeKalb area and its citizens on the Citizens Community Enhancement Commission from March 26, 2007, through December 31, 2020. I know Susan is with us this evening. You know, Susan has a passion for community art, and she seemingly every meeting had something to say about art in our community, whether it be in a museum, whether it be in a theater, or whether it be outside. And we really appreciate her many, many years of service. And Sue, I see you're on Zoom. Would you like to make a few comments? If so, please unmute yourself.
Yes, I'd like to thank you, Mayor, and the prior mayors, for keeping me on this commission. It was an opportunity to be able to work with the citizens of DeKalb to show the pride in our community. It has gone from, we started out, actually, right about the time we did Huskies on Parade, which was an incredible experience for all of us to show how much our community loved the university and the people there, and we were able to support them. And we went through a few more initiatives, and I hope that this commission, and I'm sure it will, continue to bring art to our community so that we can let other people know how wonderful it is to live in DeKalb and to be proud of the arts and the entertainment and just everything about DeKalb. And I encourage anybody in the community to paint a fireplug for us. It's really, there's amazing opportunities out there, and I encourage people to take advantage of all of them. Thank you, Mayor Smith.
You're welcome. Thank you, Susan, for your so many, many years of service. Our next presentation tonight is a proclamation that once again, if you recall, a couple of weeks ago, we had a proclamation to the DeKalb Rotary Club for 100 years of existence. Would you know it that we have now another club in DeKalb, the Kiwanis Club of DeKalb, that this very day, January 25, is celebrating its 100th year of community service in our community? I'd like to read this proclamation. I know we have several members of the Kiwanis Club in the audience. I see John Smith, Dave Wood, Matt Emkin, Gary Vandermeer, Ellingsworth Webb, Taran Thaden, Mark Meyer. I think, you know, I know all these folks because they've been so involved in our community. So this is a proclamation. Whereas the Kiwanis Club of DeKalb was chartered on January 25, 1921, and whereas the club is continually focused on the Kiwanis International Pledge to serve the children of the world, and whereas evidence of its commitment to the youth of DeKalb began in its first decade with the donation of uniforms for the high school band, and whereas the club has long been a staunch supporter of the development of parks in DeKalb by funding swimming programs at Hopkins Park and creating the DeKalb Kiwanis Park in 1974, which has become the hub of soccer activity in DeKalb, and whereas the club expanded the reach of Kiwanis in this area by sponsoring the creation of the Sycamore Club in 1951, the Kishawaki Club in 1969, the Action Club of Opportunity House in 2003, and the Tri-County Club in 2010. And whereas the club sponsored the creation of the First Key Club in the Illinois Eastern Iowa District of, at DeKalb High School in 1947, and sponsors Builders Clubs at Huntley and Rosette Middle Schools, they're providing a service club opportunity for the youth of this community. And whereas the club has made significant financial distributions to such international programs as the eradication of iodine deficiency disorders in the 90s and the elimination of maternal neonatal tetanus in this century. And whereas the club has funded scholarships for graduating DeKalb High School seniors for college for over 60 years. And whereas the Flag Program, which began in 1998, provides a patriotic outlet for those households in DeKalb that participate. Whereas the club has continuously participated in DeKalb's Corn Fest since 1982, providing delicious roasted sweet corn for the multitudes attending. Therefore, I, Jerry Smith, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, do hereby proclaim the day of Monday, January 25, 2021, as Kiwanis Club of DeKalb Day in the City of DeKalb, Illinois. In witness thereof, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the City of DeKalb to be affixed this 25th day of January, 2021. Now, we have several members of the Kiwanis Club here, and I know we want to get a picture, but before we do, I understand one of the Kiwanis members is going to make a short response to this. Who's that gonna be? Gary? If you'd come up to the podium, Gary, and speak into that microphone, and then we'll get a picture, okay?
Just to prove, this is the original charter for the Kiwanis Club of DeKalb. What's more amazing is that we've somehow managed to keep track of where it is for 100 years. Kiwanis is a global organization of volunteers dedicated to improving the world, one child at a time. The world, our community. From swimming lessons to park development to sponsoring young people's opportunity to give service through Builders Clubs at the middle schools, through the Key Club at the high school. Kiwanis believes in service, that's what we do, we're good at it. We thank you for the proclamation. We look forward to being able to continue to serve DeKalb. Some of us won't make it to the next 100 years, but there may be someone in our youth programs that might. We look forward to always being a willing participant in serving the children of the world. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's get my hands. And Gary, whereby I am rapidly approaching the year of 100 myself, I thought that it would be appropriate for me to stay up here at the table because we have other business to do. I'm gonna ask our city manager, Bill Nicholas, to come up and do a...
Scott Zach is gonna do the honors.
Okay. Scott, you're gonna do a picture, then, of the proclamation. I got the proclamation right here. So Scott, why don't you come up and get this? So anybody and everybody from the Kiwanis Club who'd like to be in the picture, come on up, and we'll get that picture.
Scott, you're in the picture.
You need to peek your head out of someone's armpit.
Thank you very much. And you're welcome. You're welcome. Thank you. It's just so glad to be able to do things like this on behalf of the City of DeKalb. Thank you. Our assistant city manager, Josh Bolt, got an interesting email today, and I've asked him to come up and share that, the contents of that email for those of you who are in the audience and are listening at home. Josh, would you share this honor that came to the City of DeKalb?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Once before, here on your desk is an award from the League of American Bicyclists. They recognize bike-friendly communities across the nation. I think we started this in year 2016 to 2020, received our first award. This one is for year 2020 to year 2024. Goes through an extensive application that many community partners have to communicate with. Jason Blumenthal had his hands in this, Park District Leadership. Northwestern Medicine, Kishawaki Bike and Rec Club should be, was a, you know, a thank you as well. They've done their part in helping advocate and expand the trailways throughout the community, not just with the City of DeKalb, but elsewhere. There's University Road, Kesslinger, North First Street. They're out there posting those three-foot-to-pass rules. This is just a proclamation, something to be proud of, and just another small win for the City of DeKalb as we try to become a little bit more environmentally friendly and try to promote bike activity throughout the city.
Thank you, Josh. And we got bronze classification, we're a bicycle-friendly community. I don't know if you can see that, but thank you, Josh. Appreciate it. And congratulations to so many folks who do find that the growth of our bike paths around DeKalb and Sycamore has provided our citizens just another reason why the quality of life in this area is so good. Okay, let's move on now to appointments. I do have several mayor appointments that I would ask council approval for. These can be done in omnibus vote, if that is satisfactory to everyone. Good. Then let me read the mayor appointments that I would like to have your consideration for approval this evening. Appointment of Jeff Main to the Police Pension Board for a two-year term through May 31, 2022. Number two, appointment of Kyle Moore and Nick Newman to the Citizens Environmental Commission for a two-year term through December 31, 2022. And the appointment of Richard Dowen to the Airport Advisory Board for a four-year term through December 31, 2024. I'd entertain a motion to approve those appointments.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Finukin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdam.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight aye.
Thank you. Those appointments were approved. We have seven items on our consent agenda. As you probably know, consent agenda comprises a number of items that the council has had a chance to take a look at and has opted not to have any additional discussion on. Again, these are usually enacted by one motion unless one of the items is requested to be taken off the agenda. Do I have that request from anyone for any item on the agenda? If not, these are the items on tonight's consent agenda. The minutes of the regular city council meeting of January 11, 2021. Number two, accounts payable and payroll through January 25, 2021 in the amount of $3,143,716.98. Number three, investment and bank balance summary through November 2020. Number four, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through November 2020. Number five, hospitality recovery program update through November 2020. Number six, Freedom of Information FOIA Act report, December 23, or 4, December 2020. And number seven, FY 2020 Human Services Funding Fourth Quarter Report. I'd entertain a motion to consent, to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any discussion?
Mayor, just a quick note, may I? I usually don't interfere in this, but I just wanted to point out that one of the items on your consent agenda tonight is the Hospitality Recovery Program statistical summary for the month just ended. And you'll notice that we just have December to put a wrap on what was, from the standpoint of restaurant bar tax and hotel motel tax, a really ugly year. But we'll know where we stood at the end of the year, and we'll know what our marker is going forward. So please take a look at that, and by the end of, well, maybe the next couple of weeks, we'll have the December numbers for you.
Thank you. Okay, we've had a motion and a second. No further discussion. Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdam.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finukin.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight aye.
Tonight's consent agenda is approved. We have no public hearings tonight, no other considerations. Let's move right along to item J on your agenda. Resolutions. Number one, Resolution 2021-010, approving a laundromat liquor license for South 4th Street Mega Laundromat, LLC, located at 1387 South 4th Street with supplemental licensure for video gaming. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Finukin and seconded by Alderman Favor. Prior to any discussion, city manager Nicholas, please.
Very quickly, Mayor, as you noted in the background, it was the end of August that the council approved a new liquor license classification specifically for laundromats. And subsequent to that, the owners of the South 4th Street Mega Laundromat at 1387 South 4th Street applied for a license under that new classification, as well as a gaming license application for up to six video gaming terminals. The laundromat liquor license application was reviewed by the mayor in his capacity as liquor commissioner, and also by acting police chief Bob Riddell. One recommendation for more cameras out in the transition area from the gaming area to the laundromat area was acceded to by the owners. And the owners have also completed their background checks in other parts of the application which are required. So the city staff recommend this to you.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? If not, roll call, please.
Perkins.
No.
McAdam.
No.
Verbic.
No.
Favor.
No.
Morris.
No.
Finukin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Two aye, five nay.
That motion, that resolution, is defeated. Resolution number two, Resolution 2021-011, authorizing the adoption of the 2019 DeKalb County All Hazards Mitigation Plan. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdam, seconded by Alderman Morris. City manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. This plan has been vetted for the last year and a half or so by all the municipalities in the county, and also a number of larger institutions, Kish College, NIU, and so forth. It lays out a plan, and the plan is very general, of course, touching on all imaginable hazards, from nuclear releases to floods and tornadoes and so forth. But it's a requirement that AIMA has laid out, and if the county is to expect, in the event of a disaster, any support from the state or federal level, we have to have a plan in place. This is the most recent version of that, and it comes to you with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you, city manager Nicholas. Any discussion, any further discussion on this? If not, roll, oh, excuse me, Alderman Favor.
Just, I'd be curious, how often will the plan be reviewed or updated?
Yeah. Well, it's got a five-year term. The last plan was not updated in the intramural years, but the process to update it is going back through this year-and-a-half process where every municipality, village, town, and the county, plus the county board, have to review any changes. So I'm not, it's unlikely it will be regularly updated. So it's very general in that respect, but it does lay out the relationships that are established through first responder organizations and so forth in that respect. Those are updated outside of this agreement on a regular basis. So that, I guess, that is the best I can do to answer your question.
Yeah, just curious, thank you very much.
And this, I think, as the background suggested, intended for five years. It's supposed to be a broad guide for public officials. But it helps us qualify for certain state and federal aid programs, and that's why I think it's a good thing to have in place. Any further questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
McAdam.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finukin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight aye.
Thank you. Number three, Resolution 2021-012. Number three, Resolution 2021-012, authorizing payment to Lift Off in the amount of $48,938.40 for the renewal of the City of DeKalb Microsoft Office 365 subscription. Roll, motion, please.
So moved. Second.
Been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. The current service provider is Lift Off. It's a third-party, a third-party provider. Obviously, Microsoft does the hardware and provides recommendations for use and provides its own support. In our case, we ask for additional support, which Microsoft, the originator and the license holder, doesn't offer. And those, those support services are obviously made available to not just our IT department, but any, any port basically that the city owns. We went out for bid, a number of others bid on this as well. The, they're bunched pretty close, but the low bid was to Lift Off, and we have had a good relationship with them. They've been responsive, and we recommend your approval of this.
Yeah, these companies must use computerized metrics to do their bidding, because I was impressed with those three top bids, and they were within $1,000 of three or something. So it was impressive. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finoukin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. That resolution is approved. Let's move right along to ordinances. We have one ordinance for second reading this evening. This, if you recall, had considerable discussion on our discussion of it in our last council meeting, and that's for Ordinance 2021-003, approving a special use permit for a parking lot as a principal use when located within 300 feet of the use served, 1030 East Locust Street nearing Electrical Works. To get this on the table, I would entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Alderman Finoukin. That was a motion made by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Finoukin. City manager Nicholas, please.
Yes, just very briefly, since we discussed this at our last regular meeting, Scott Dillon and the several neighbors who were here that evening at the last meeting have had some conversation. We believe, and I talked to Mr. Dillon today, he's intent on sticking to the commitment that he made at the, at the meeting two weeks ago. However, he knows, I know, by my observation this morning, that not all the drivers have taken seriously, or maybe even not all of them know, the provisions that we'd expect in terms of parking on Locust Street and stacking on, staging on Locust Street and so forth, even though we've offered a release to that. Mr. Dillon acknowledges that. My proposal to you tonight is let's give this another 30 days. Let's see how the company and the neighborhood work this out. So what I propose is to, is to bring this back to table, is for you to table tonight and to bring this back on the February 22 meeting, the second meeting in February, and let's see how it's going, rather than to just plunge ahead at this point. Obviously, the parking lot cannot be paved at this point, and we have a little bit of time to see how the performance is.
That seems to make sense. Do I have a motion to table this?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by, it's been moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman McAdams, that we postpone that until our second meeting in February. Would that be, would that be agreeable to you guys? Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Favor.
Yes.
Alderman Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finoukin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. Second reading of that ordinance will, has been tabled until our second meeting in February. We have one ordinance, I believe, yeah, for first reading tonight. Number one, Ordinance 2021-004, approving a final plat of the re-subdivision, an amended final development plan, and amended development standards for Gold Frame LLC for the Facebook planned development site along East Gerler Road to accommodate a ComEd substation. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager Nicholas, any comments on this?
Just very quickly, we strongly support this. The title basically gets right to the, to the heart of the matter. The interest, the joint interest of ComEd and, and Facebook, which has been doing business, was doing business at the time as Gold Frame and still has Gold Frame on the original development agreement and so forth, interest in collaborating and the making of a facility that will serve the plant and also serve the area more adequately is to our advantage. We had a, this matter before the Planning and Zoning Commission back on January 19, and the commission was unanimous in its support. Initially, there had been some concern by a few of the residential neighbors because they were thinking that what was being proposed was going to be with frontage on Route 23. That wasn't the case. If you read further into the public notice, you can see that's not, not true. So I think we've, we've met that, that concern, and really, it's an integral part of what will make the, the energy supply more reliable, which, as you know, the, the company cannot tolerate blinking lights for its, its consumers, and we are very enthusiastically in support of this.
Yeah, I, again, I reiterate my absolute pleasure in watching the Planning and Zoning Commission. They looked at this, they vetted it, they had a number of, they had a good discussion before unanimously recommended it to the city council, so. Okay, any other, any further discussion on this? If not, roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Finoukin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdam.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
That ordinance is approved on first reading. Is there a desire to waive second reading tonight?
Motion to approve and waive second reading. Second.
Who wants to second that? You guys want to fight out of fight over, okay. Bill Finoukin, moved that we waive second reading and approve tonight. Alderman Morris made the second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Finoukin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdam.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. That ordinance is approved. Now we move to reports and communications. This allows our city council members, and the mayor, and the city clerk, and the city manager to make any comments they may like to tonight, and we'll start with our first ward, Alderman, Carolyn Morris.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind people, if you have a fire hydrant, as the snow stacks up, to clear around that fire hydrant, and just be careful driving on these roads.
Thank you, Carolyn. Bill Finoukin, our second ward.
Thank you. Again, you know, the COVID vaccine has begun to be distributed. Encourage everyone that can to get that important shot when it becomes available to you. In the meantime, maintain your social distance, wear your mask, avoid crowded or larger gatherings, and wash your hands. And again, along with Carolyn, please pay attention to the snow and the snowplows and drive safely.
Thank you, Alderman Finoukin. Alderman Smith, third ward.
No report.
Alderman Perkins, fourth ward.
No report.
And Scott McAdams from our fifth ward.
No report.
And Mike Verbic from our sixth ward.
No report.
And Tony Favor from our seventh ward.
I will just, I'll add, I'll pre-thank, you know, our Public Works Department for the, the great job that I know that they're going to do following our streets and the overtime that'll have to be put in. The other thing I would say is, you know, shovel your, shovel your sidewalks. Makes it very dangerous for people that have to walk places, otherwise they're out in the street, so, you know, please shovel your walks if you can.
Thank you. I would just simply second what Alderman Finoukin said about the vaccine. Do sign up for that. I know my wife and I are still waiting the call from the Health Department when we will be able to get our shot in the arm, if you will, and so I would encourage everybody to follow up on that. Also, today, we got word from Springfield that we have moved as a region from tier one into phase four, which allows our bars and restaurants to open in a more liberal sense with more folks accommodated. Again, to reiterate what Alderman Finoukin said, we have to be careful as we get into those restaurants, and even though the restaurant may have 50 diners or 50% of the capacity, just, you know, be vigilant, be diligent as you move around the facility. But I know it's just welcome news for so many of our bars and restaurants who just needed this so very, very badly. This week, we lost a community treasure when Barbara Cumberfelt, one of the founders of the Preservation of the Egyptian Theater Organization, passed away in Monroe, Wisconsin. Barb was in her 80s. I talked to her daughter this afternoon, who's making final arrangements. Barb and Irv Cumberfelt really founded Preservation of the Egyptian Theater and in, in the late 70s, when the wrecking ball was about ready to demolish that building. And through their efforts, and then through the continuing efforts of so many in our community, we have a physical community treasure, if you will, in the Egyptian Theater. And my only hope, and I've talked to Alex Nierad from the Egyptian Theater on this, is that when we have that gala grand opening of the Egyptian Theater, that somewhere within that program, we're able to acknowledge Barb Cumberfelt for all her work. With that, city clerk Fazikas, any report?
No report.
Thank you. City manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. Like council member Favor, I wanted to just very quickly thank in advance. Put a lot of pressure on our Public Works Department, but they, they're very thin. Every one of them, from the Water Division and the Street Division, are in a truck right now. They'll work through the night, almost certainly, given the low onset, or the slow onset of the, of the storm and, and the winds that'll come afterward, and then they'll finish the day tomorrow, whenever they do, somewhere out at the airport, moving a lot of snow from that asphalt. So my, my heart goes out, and my, my thanks go out to them.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, there is no executive session tonight. With that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's regular meeting.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman McAdams, that we adjourn tonight's meeting. Any discussion? I didn't think we would have any. Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdam.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes. Yes.
Finoukin.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. Do be safe out there tonight. This meeting is adjourned.